Executive session. That's what she said.
Oh, does she have it? Does the, oh, okay. Got it. Okay. Oh, executive meeting. Got it.
I was confused too. Ready to go? Like to call the July 8th, 2024 executive meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Purpose of this meeting for acting on requests for changes in zoning and special procedure. We call roll, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart? Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Yep.
Okay. We have a quorum. We will begin this executive meeting with a letter of recommendation. PC seventeen and eight and eighteen dash twenty-four impact Agapi's ministries.
So this is a letter of recommendation for approval of the change in zoning and the accompanying conditional use permit to permit a group living facility. This letter of recommendation is consistent with the commission's actions at their July first executive meeting.
You've heard the, uh.
I make a motion to approve.
Very good. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have a letter of recommendation for PC twenty dash twenty-four, the Harmish Sharma.
So this is a letter of decision consistent with the commission's actions on July first, granting the conditional use permit as requested.
Okay. Is there a motion for the approval of this request?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Seeing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have under correspondence. RE PC zero six dash seventy-six Benedictine Sisters.
So this is a correspondence item regarding PC oh six seventy-six Benedictine Sisters, which was a request for a conditional use permit in the R five, originally to permit an infirmary addition associated with the existing convent that was on the site. So this is a church that existed long before the adoption of the zoning ordinance that at the time of construction did include a convent. In nineteen sixty-five, that living facility use became non-conforming as the zoning ordinance does not permit the group living facilities for religious purposes by right. They are a conditional use. So the dormitory, the convent became non-conforming. But in nineteen seventy-six, the church wanted to do the infirmary addition. So they requested the CUP to bring the whole site into compliance. Then in two thousand and six, the CUP was amended again to permit a different type of group living arrangement. At that time, it was to permit high school students, international high school students to reside at the church while they attended local Catholic schools. At this time, there is a different parish that has purchased the property and they want to use it for their regular, as a place of worship. So everything that is accessory to a place of worship is already permitted. The chapel itself, the sanctuary, the offices, and all the programming that goes along with the church. However, the way the conditional use permit is written right now, it does not permit the overnight use of the site by their missionaries. So they run a missionary training program. The training of those missionaries is permitted, but for them to spend the night there. The petitioner has requested an amendment to broaden the conditional use permit. Essentially, what the department finds is that all of these versions of how people have resided at the site are all different forms of group living facility for religious purposes. So we find it would be appropriate for the commission to modify the permitted uses of the CUP to more broadly permit group living facilities for religious purposes. So we are recommending approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion for approval?
Make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next correspondence is RE PC zero, sorry. PC forty-three dash sixteen Nolan Real Estate Interest LLC.
So this is a request to modify this existing C eight planned commercial district to grant a parking reduction. This is a C eight planned commercial district that permits a self-storage facility and based on, it's a self-storage facility with a retail space in the bottom. It's been a dental office this whole time, but based on the change to the use, the new tenant that they are seeking, they are asking for a parking reduction. The planning department finds that this is reasonable as the main use of the site is a self-storage facility, which does not draw a lot of intensity. So we find that granting the parking reduction would not be a detriment to the area.
If that changes later on, does that affect us if we pass this?
So the only, there's only a range of permitted uses that are proposed, but any changes to like the overall site design, we would bring, that would have to come back to the commission for a lot of reevaluation.
So I have a question. Is the dental office, the new use of it?
I believe the dental office has been there. And they want it to be more of a, just a retail use. I apologize. I don't have the letter in front of me. Oh, excuse me. The other tenant, there's two tenant spaces and the dental office has been one of them. The other tenant has moved and the dental office wants to expand. The dental office has a higher parking requirement than the tenant that is vacating the space. So it is more of the dental use.
You heard a recommendation. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move for approval.
Your second?
Second.
Know those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Opposed? Ayes have it. We have the correspondence, RE PC fourteen dash twenty-one, First T Range, Inc.
Good evening, commission. This is a correspondence item for PC fourteen dash twenty-one, First T Range Incorporated. This came before the planning commission as a request for an extension of time to submit a site development plan for a golf driving range on twelve point eight acres located on the east side of Lee May Ferry Road, approximately one thousand one hundred feet south of Baumgartner Road. The site is located in South County and as you can see on the right, it is outlined in red. Just a brief little timeline for you all. Ordinance twenty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-one notes a site development plan shall be filed within the Department of Planning to review and approve within eighteen months from the date of approval of the preliminary development plan by the county council. Where due cause is provided by the developer, the planning commission may extend that original site development plan submission date. The preliminary plan that was approved by county council was approved on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two with the ordinance twenty-eight thousand three fifty-one, with a deadline for the site development plan review and approval set for July thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. Last year, this commission approved an extension of time to submit a site development plan to July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as there were some medical conditions on the petitioner's part that they were unable to get a site plan submitted. They are now coming before you again requesting an additional extension of time. The petitioner's representative stated that the petitioner wishes to no longer have the proposed restaurant that was noted in the original ordinance. Instead, they would do a building in the same size footprint as the proposed restaurant, but it would have a golf simulator and concession stand, which is in keeping with the original golf range uses. They also have been working continuously on off-site legal considerations. So the department is recommending approval of this request and recommending a deadline extended to July thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, based on the legal, off-site legal considerations that they're still working on, as well as just the change in the proposed use and just needing time to ship that on a site development plan. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
And then I neglected to put the next petition on your script, but it is on the agenda.
Okay. And we have up next is PC twenty-two and twenty-three dash twenty-four Kittle Property Group, Inc.
Right. Good evening, commissioners. This is PC twenty-two and twenty-three dash twenty-four Kittle Property Group. A request for change in zoning from R five to R six residence district and request for a planned environment unit procedure in R six to permit multifamily homes and associated amenities. This is a twelve point three one acre tract in the southeastern quadrant of North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. The site is in mid-north county and is bounded in red on the aerial. Okay. As commissioners may recall, this is the preliminary site development plan. This proposal has not changed since commissioners last saw it. However, I have outlined the fencing proposed by the petitioner in yellow. This is the proposed grading of the site. The arrows indicate the direction of the grade from high to low. I've outlined the areas with particularly steep slopes. All right. Since the petitioner plans to apply for tax credits, the Missouri Housing Development Commission requires security measures to be put in place at the site. So between the last executive meeting and this session, the petitioner has submitted further information about their security plans for the site. So first, the site will feature twenty-four seven live high-definition security camera feeds, which are also provided to first responders such as EMT and police. These will be located in all common areas and includes a license plate reader system. And next, if a tenant is found to have committed a crime on the property, their lease is terminated. And finally, the petitioner states that the proposed walls and fencing will ensure the safety of the residents on the property.
Sorry. What's the blue and purple? Is that the?
That was on, that was on their, so this is just a sample of like the locations of the cameras.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. It never wants to cooperate with me. All right. These are the visuals submitted by the petitioner of the proposed walls and fencing. The petitioner has stated that they are open to decorative revision of these elevations. Finally, the petitioner provided preliminary elevations for two of the buildings that are facing the single-family residences to the south. They're labeled here and shown on the next slide. So here's a closer look at the elevations for these buildings. All right. The department is recommending approval of these requests. Consistent with the findings from the executive meeting, the department finds the change in zoning appropriate as multifamily development is desirable in the area. Additionally, the department recommends use of the PEU procedure, both to permit creative design at the site and to allow the planning commission to recommend specific conditions of development. The department is recommending revisions to the site development plan and architectural elevations. These recommendations are all consistent with those from the executive meeting, except that the department is recommending that all fencing shall be decorative with stone masonry columns and pedestrian gates located as approved on the site development plan in architectural elevations. And fencing should be minimized wherever possible along North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. And finally, the department recommends revision to the architectural elevations consistent with those from the executive meeting. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
Can we see the fence layout again?
Yep. Did you want this one or the, cool, this one?
No. Keep going.
I think the very first one.
Oh, of where, where the fence is proposed, yeah. So it's in yellow.
Yeah. So where they, where you see the yellow line is where they, is where they are currently proposing the fencing, which right now they're proposing to be a sort of a faux wrought iron style. So you can see that they are leaving some along University Place without fencing currently. So we have drafted a recommendation of one of the conditions being that all fencing shall be decorative, that it shall include masonry pillars at appropriate distances, which the petitioner in their written, written response has indicated that they are willing to do. And as well as one of the conditions of development being that through the site development plan review process, that we would work with them as possible to reduce fencing, particularly along Hanley Road as much as possible, and still comply with their needs for security. So the petitioner at this point is very open to making some of these changes. They just, they're just not certain exactly where they want to do it until they dive a little bit deeper into their site development plans. And staff finds that having that condition of as approved on the site development plan gives us the ability to review their fencing plan with them and then bring it back to you for final approval, should this development be, you know, put forward by the county council and adopted.
Any more questions?
Yes. So a few slides later, you have the actual rendition, I guess, of the proposed fence.
It's a sample.
It's a sample. So this is a, yeah, these are sample pictures of the style of fence that they currently intend to use, which is a sort of a, it's usually aluminum, black aluminum type of fencing that they're open to modifying through the, through the design process when they, when they get to that stage.
I personally like the fencing in the bottom two. This one seems a little bit.
If this, this one at the top has the additional security features, which is where the bars stick out, usually with a decorative spike. So yes, those are, the one at the top is typically seen more as a, as a more security, a decorative security style, whereas the two at the bottom are just generally more.
And I would say the bottom two images are meant more to show what the retaining walls would look like, rather than the fencing atop as the fencing option.
Well, and the fencing at the, yes, and the retaining walls will include fences on the top that will.
I just mean that the fence that's on top of this retaining wall is not what they're proposing along Hanley.
But possibly along the retaining wall?
Correct. Atop, atop the retaining walls. Yes.
Okay.
You're going to bring back the final?
Yeah. So the condition for the fencing as currently, is currently written in the draft proposal for the commission's is that it is, all fencing shall be decorative, including masonry pillars as approved on the site development plan, which gives that flexibility in working with their, their design, their design professionals through the site development plan review process to make sure that fencing is the right fencing and it's put in the right place. And then ultimately, that comes back to you all for approval as part of the final step in the site development plan review process.
Does the department have any concerns about this style of fencing at all? Or does this meet some of the?
About the security style of the fence?
Well, I think there were some concerns raised last meeting about folks feeling as if they were caged in with certain types of fencing styles.
So in general, I would consider this, and the department considers this decorative. This is a decorative style fence. And so we would work with the applicant through the review process to, to minimize the amount of fencing. Even this decorative fencing, we do want to, we want to create communities that feel open to, for everyone, while still giving that security that they're looking for because they, as they do know in their written correspondence, because this location is located in an area with a slightly elevated number of calls for service from, from law enforcement agencies, they are required to provide a security plan to the state as part of their application process for funding for this. So we certainly do not want to jeopardize that by removing too much fencing, but as much as we can, working with those constraints with the petitioner, we will do so. But they, but they, as they stated in their written correspondence, keeping the, the security cameras is critical for them, which I think is, is not necessarily a zoning issue. And I think this commission has no problems and in fact would, would encourage the use of such security systems, their, their readers and the sort of gates at the entrances.
Yeah, I just had a general misunderstanding of the need to have license plate readers without security fencing. It just seemed not to really get the job done without both working together. Can't have one without the other, in my opinion. Thank you, Jacob.
Any more questions? Okay. That said, a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes? Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. At this time, if we have anything else.
I believe that is it. If you will, we would adjourn between.
I will move for adjournment for the executive meeting here. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Adjourned.
It is 7:00 PM. If you would like to gavel in immediately on time or if anyone needs two minutes to break.
Have a break here? No? No? Okay. Let's go. Okay. At this time, I would like to bring this July 8th public hearing, Planning Commission to order. The purpose of this meeting is for our hearing to request for changes in zoning and special procedures. Can we take a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart? Ms. Hart, I see you've unmuted, but I've not heard. I didn't hear you.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have five.
We have a quorum. Okay. I'd like to welcome you all to St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble to my right, Director Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions to my left. I hope you have picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list, the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission agendas. By doing this, you'll be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the County Council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive the staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on August 5, 2024. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning at least one week prior to the next executive meeting on August 5, 2024 will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in the Executive Meeting Agenda Packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision will be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has a responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask the questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make a crowd count part of the record for each petition. And the first petition heard tonight will be PC 24 and 25 L and C Truck Repair.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is PC 24 and 25 24 L and C Truck Repair. The request is for a conditional use permit in the C7 General Extensive Commercial District and a conditional use permit in the C7 General Extensive Commercial District. The proposed use is a towed vehicle storage yard and a vehicle repair service center on two tracts, one that's .44 acres and the other that's .89 acres on the south side of Liberty Avenue, approximately 200 and 300 feet east of North Orson Road. As you can see on the context map, the sites are located in mid-county and the two adjacent parcels are outlined in red in the aerial. This is a larger aerial of the two parcels. From the land use map, you can see that the subject sites are located on Liberty Avenue, which is due south of Page Avenue, a thoroughfare characterized by a mixture of commercial and office uses. South of the sites are a mixture of offices and warehouses in areas largely zoned M1 Industrial District or C7 General Extensive Commercial District. The staff would like to note that due east of the site is the city of Overland and due south is the city of Creve Cor. This first image is facing south and towards the public hearing notice. Oops. Excuse me. Across the site, due north across Liberty Avenue, you can see some of the warehouse and office. This is facing down east on Liberty Avenue. This is west back the other way on Liberty Avenue. This is an image of striping and parked vehicles in the right-of-way on Liberty Avenue. This is facing east along the northern property line of the first parcel. This is facing south. And this is facing south to get a better view of the operating office and repair center. This is facing east across that first parcel. This is facing south along the east property line. This is now facing south into the second parcel towards a vacant loading dock. This is facing east from one of the second parcel into the first and notice the grade between the two. This is facing south along the eastern property line. This is facing west along the southern property line. This is facing south to show the neighboring land uses. And this is facing north along the western property line. And now the petitioner's presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Gary Kimball with LDC Engineering. I'm representing the owners of L and C Trucking. And basically, we just need to get a conditional use to... On the larger lot, it's an existing business, been a business for many years, but apparently there was no conditional use for it. Then the second lot is going to be for a conditional use for parking of the trucks as an overflow. We're going to demolish the existing building and just pave it, because it's already paved now. So we're just going to pave it, curb it, contain the water, because the water does run from one side to the other. So that's what we're here to...
Both at the same time? Yes. Okay. Any questions from the committees?
Yeah. I just want to understand. So there's one lot now that's being used for auto repair?
Yes. That's the larger lot.
The one with all the vehicles on it? And then you're going to... Basically, you need a larger space.
Yeah. They need more storage for vehicles that are brought to them. So that's what they're going to do is use that secondary lot for parking to also get the vehicles out of the right-of-way.
And they were, for some reason, using it without the conditional use permit? Is that what you said?
The business has been... I believe this is the third owner of that business, and it's been business for many, many years. And apparently, when it was started, it wasn't required at the time. So now that we're taking and moving to the second property, it was requested that we get a conditional use for this property also.
Okay. And I don't know what the requirements would be for that site plan, but I guess I was just wondering about the fencing and the look of the current property.
On the existing property, there's going to be no improvements. Nothing's going to be changed that's there. The only improvements are going to be on the second lot, and it's going to be curbed, it's going to be fenced, and it's actually going to have a gate closing it off. They're not going to be combined as one lot. They're going to be kept separate. So there's no cross-accesses required. Interests will also all be off Liberty.
But you're asking for a conditional use permit on the larger lot also, right?
Correct.
Okay. Does that require a fence?
Because it does not necessarily require a fence. Did you provide a presentation with a site planner?
There's just a couple. I just the... That's the existing lot. And there's going to be no changes on there. And it's fenced all the way around already. And then the second one is the proposed lot additional parking.
Is there currently parking in the right-of-way?
There is striping there now.
Do they park vehicles within the right-of-way?
From time to time.
I believe the photo showed that they did. Thank you. Thank you.
What are your hours of operation? And do you have people...
I do not know their hours of operation.
Oh, sorry. So you don't know if there's folks working overnight?
I do not know that.
The owner's here?
What's that?
The owner's here.
I don't believe he is... Oh, he is back there. He's hiding.
Would you like to come up and answer that question?
I've never met him. I've always just talked to him on the phone.
Okay.
Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Carl David Fitzwater.
And at the end of this public hearing? Sure. Would you do ensure to fill that out and present it to Mel at the end of the day?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Questions?
Hours of operation?
We open Monday morning at 7:00 AM, close at Friday night at 11:00 PM. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again? You're open from Monday at 7:00?
Monday morning at 7:00 to Friday night at 11:00.
And everything in between?
Everything in between. Yes.
Do you run 24 hours?
We do through the middle of the week. On the weekend, we're closed. So I have three shifts, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and just two on Friday.
And you're open to the public for regular...
Yes. Yes, sir. Public. So something... We do mostly commercial vehicles for small fleets. If you've got a small business, you've got two trucks, you've got 10 trucks. So that's primarily where we have made our market is. And a lot of the reason for the overnight, a lot of our customers don't have excessive amounts of trucks because they cost a lot of money. They like the fact they can get it fixed at night, pick it up in the morning.
But someone's personal vehicle has a radiator issue 3:00 in the morning? They can come?
Yeah. They can come. Yeah. That's... We honestly do more work during the evening because we do a lot of work for FedEx and stuff like that than we do during the day. Any more questions?
No. I think my concern is I'm not familiar with the area, but it just seems like there's a lot of vehicles and overflow and what the, you know, what the look is in the neighborhood, I guess you would say. I know it's an industrial neighborhood, but...
That to speak out of turn, we pretty much hog up the street. I'll be honest. Which is why we're doing this to get out of that.
So you can stay on the property and not overflow into the right-of-way?
The location's good. I don't like parking stuff out in the street, but I have no... In the last couple of years, we've had no options.
Because of your growth.
To maintain the business and do that. So we, like you said, we back into the areas that have painted lines, but the trucks are generally longer than my parking spots. So they do stick out in the streets. So this was the best way I could address this.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
I'm sorry. Lighting? There's going to be four lights on it in the corners.
Security of any type?
There's going to be security tied in with the security system I have now. Yes, sir.
And then how many spaces? I mean, how many vehicles are you looking at at one time?
Well, wait till they get the building down, I can measure it. I don't have any idea right now.
I mean, if...
I would tell you approximately 30 to 35, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah. We have some parking shown on there, but those are just for like box truck size. Some of them may be cars where you can double stack them, so.
Okay. More questions? Do we have any more questions? Here? Okay. If not, do we have any persons representing your group that would wish to speak in favor of this petition? Thanks for your presentation. We're going to ask for folks to come up here. Okay?
Thank you.
Do we have any persons who want to speak in favor individually? Do we have any persons that would want to speak for a group that is opposed? And do we have any person that would like to speak opposing this? If not, could I take a hand count of the people that are in favor of this PC? Please put your hand up if you're for this, including the people that present at this. Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I see seven as well.
Seven? Any folks opposed? Very good. Thank you. We're going to just close in. We're going to go to our next PC, or which is PC 26 dash 24 Amrin.
Good evening, everyone. In front of you is PC 26 dash 24 Amrin Merrimack. The petition is by Amrin. Request is for a CUP in a NU non-urban district. The proposed use is a second telecommunications tower on a 280.17 acre site located at the terminus of Fine Road northwest of the Mississippi River and northeast of the Merrimack River. As you can see by the context map, this is in very south county and the site is outlined in red on the right. This is a larger outline. As you can see, the Merrimack and Mississippi River are both south of the site and to the east is a country club and further east is Beatty County Park. As you can see by this map, north of the site is a sewer district wastewater man treatment center. Like I said, the country club is to the east and then further east is the county park. West of the site is Jefferson County after the rivers. As for our site photos, this is facing west on the site of our public hearing notice. This is north looking up Fine Road. This is looking across Fine Road, across the street, towards the country club. And then this is south looking towards the actual coal plant site also on Fine Road. This is further into the site looking south towards where the proposed spot of the new tower would be. You can see in this photo an existing tower that would eventually be torn down after the secondary one becomes operational. Because of the size of the site, this was as close as we could get to the actual physical location it would be at due to construction on the road. This is looking west. This is at the base of the existing telecommunications tower, which as noted, would eventually be torn down once the secondary one becomes operational. This is just looking straight up at the top of that telecommunications tower, also west of the site. And now we have the petitioner's presentation.
That shouldn't work for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Russell Bean. I'm with Selective Solutions. We are a site acquisition consulting company. We have been hired by Ameren to zone and permit their private LTE, uh, system that they are currently constructing. If I can scroll back here. The actual reason why we're here tonight is we're asking for the second telecommunications tower because the existing telecommunications tower can't be taken down. That tower is in a perpetual lease with ByState Metro and they are not of an interest to move their equipment to the new tower. And Ameren is not in a position to make them do that. The existing tower is 75 years old and was not constructed to support the equipment that Ameren is proposing to put up. It currently has ByState's communication, they have whip antennas, I don't know if you're familiar, just a single pole that's about 12 feet tall, there's two of those on there. And that's about all that tower is going to support. The picture, actually, the picture that you see there is, um, those are actually Ameren's high-tension power distribution lines. Those aren't going anywhere. I just wanted to make sure that was, uh, pointed out. And that again, that, that is their power lines. Ameren is proposing a 199-foot monopole-style telecommunications tower. It's just the single pole with the, what the, um, county refers to as the candelabra-style mount atop. This, uh, tower, if you look at this, this piece of property is in the, uh, far right-hand lower corner. This is at the top of a peak. This will be located next to the existing high-tension power distribution line, but it won't be as tall as the, um, power distribution line. The existing tower is, um, just around the corner from it. You guys have a view of this on your screen? It's kind of hard to see. If you, if you're following the road down from the upper left-hand corner and as you're about to make the big loop at the end, you'll see a small box with an X, that's the existing tower. That tower is 200 feet. As I mentioned, it's, was built to hold communicational, communication whip antennas. It's a very lightweight tower and it would not support, you know, we're putting up full LTE cellular-style antennas and it just would not hold. And then around the curve, you end up on that high-tension, uh, distribution line, that again, um, we, we have had those, you'll go around the county and see the cellular antennas on those. These are, um, maxed, this antenna, this tower here, structure actually has multiple lines that are carrying power to and from Illinois. The, um, UNBA will hang a paperclip on that, that existing transmission tower. Which is why we're asking for the, um, the new proposed tower. If you go on the St. Louis County Property Viewer and you click on this property, it tells you that the whole thing's zoned M1 unless you know to break it down and this actually, portion is actually zoned NU, which is why we're here tonight asking for the conditional use permit. And, um, that's just example what this tower would look like. Trying to get to the... This is just an aerial of where this tower is going to sit. Unless you work for Ameren UE, no one will ever see this tower. It's tucked back in the woods, it's, um, well beyond the limits of where people hike in, um, Beatty Park. The, uh, golf club is actually on property owned by Ameren. And then to the west is the MSD, uh, sewer treatment plant. It's a little, uh, closer in of where this tower is going to sit. If you see the blue dot, that's where this tower is going to sit. And these two, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we put these in here as, the submission is evidence. And then, does everyone, has everyone been here when we explained the LTE system? This is, we've been here, I think, four times. This is the good Lord willing, our last time to be in front of you for one of these towers. The PLTE is a system that Ameren's going to use to monitor their system. They, they will monitor the transformers, the power stations. They'll also use this system for electronic meter reading. The, the main point of this system is for, uh, safety, security. If, um, we lost power three times over the 4th of July weekend and it's never come back on quicker and the, the tower near my house is operational. This, the point of this system is if a transformer goes down, it sends a signal to the system and then they dispatch a repair crew directly to where that problem is. They don't have to drive down the, the, um, line looking for that down line, it's telling them right away. And that's, um, the, the reason why they're doing this is, uh, so that they have control of the system, they're not beholden to private tower companies. And then it's also a matter of security. They own the system, they own the site. They comply with the Homeland Security requirements of the power system. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How much area does this cover? I mean, how much area will this tower monitor?
This, this will pretty much cover the south, southeast portion of South County. This is connected to a tower that we have on Tesson Ferry. This is going to cover pretty much everything from Reeve's Barracks, south to Tesson Ferry. It's going to cover a large swath of South County. Uh, Eureka is actually going to have its own tower. We actually, the last meeting we were here...
And then this is simply for Ameren?
The, the...
I don't lease none of it out to?
Well, the actual, one of the requirements of the county is to make this available for co-location. If someone would request location on this tower, we would lease it to them. But we're not out there marketing it saying, "Come on our tower." But if, if there would be someone who is interested, we would allow them on. We have actually, we had a tower zone and permitted in Ladue. And before we can even get the, the first shovel dug, Verizon was asking to come on the tower.
I guess you got to make money where you make it.
Yeah.
Just remember that when you ask for a rate increase.
That has, um, been one of my biggest challenges on this project is, you know, we do towers, I've been in front of this board 45 times through different towers. And we really don't have much to do with the power production and generation side. I know, I know, but that's been the, the first question everybody asked is, you know, is this going to make our rates go down? I'm like, I have no idea, I can't tell you.
I should get your electric back on quicker when I go.
Yes, and it really has, I'm not, uh, I'm not kidding you. We live, I live in the northern part of Jefferson County and we had a, um, tree take down a transformer. And normally that'd be a four-day thing and we had, it was at 2:00 in the morning, by 5:00 in the morning, we had our power back on. And that, the tower that that system's covered is in, um, in, in, uh, Old 21. And bing, 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 it was right back on.
How far is this tower going to be from the transmission line, the closest one to it?
It's at least the height of the tower. The, that's something that Ameren's, there's, there's 17 chefs in this kitchen. And one of the requirements that they have, the, the transmission line people, is that the tower be at least the height of the tower away from the, the transmission line.
Any other question I have for you? The pictures that they were showing, if I was looking at the right picture, was it on the inside of the fence? On that picture of the existing tower? Who maintains that?
Ameren, Ameren. The, um, the... And unfortunately, they don't show...
I know that's, I know that's for safety reasons, but you would think, you know...
Yes, yeah, and, and they, when they, uh, designed this site, they put a, um, they clear the site, grade it, and then they put a layer of geofabric down. And then they put gravel over it and that, that keeps the, the weeds from coming up.
But not there.
No, but that, that is so far, I mean, you have to get past armed guards to get to this point. Yeah.
Any more questions? No more questions?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, at this time, do we have any persons that would like to speak in favor for a group? Do we have any person that would like to speak in favor? Do we have a person that would like to speak for a group that opposes this? And do we have a person that would like to speak opposing this? Okay. If not, we have a hand count for people that would like to approve this. I see a hand count out there? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Eight?
Eight.
All those that would be opposed. Do we have any people? One?
I see one.
Okay. Thank you very much. That now, uh, we're done with this public hearing. Thank you very much. Next, petition is 27-24 Black Holly Commercial.
Before you is PC 2724 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC. He requests us for an amended development in the M3 Plant Industrial District and the FPM3, the Flood Plane Industrial, Plant Industrial District. The proposed use is for office, warehouse, vehicle service center and including outdoor storage on a tract of 7.22 acres on the north side of Baumgartner Road, approximately 1,500 feet east of Baumgartner Industrial Drive.
Peter, before you go too much further, would you go back to the title slide? I just want to provide clarification on the proposed use. You'll see and the petitioner's representative will explain, there's actually no proposed vehicle service as part of this, um, this requested development. I overinterpreted what was written on the application. So it is advertised to include vehicle service, but you'll see that there is no vehicle service included as part of the request. So, uh, it's office, warehouse with outdoor storage. Thanks.
Appreciate the clarification. You can see on the context map, the site is located in South County and, and the aerial of the site is outlined in red. Here is the larger aerial, once again, outlined in red. This site is off Baumgartner Road, as mentioned, which is dominated especially on the north side by a mixture of various industrial uses. On the south side, you see single-family homes as well as a collection of other industrial uses. And the Merrimack River. And then north of the site are single-family homes developed largely with the PEU Plan Environment Unit procedure. This is facing north towards the public hearing notice. This is facing north into the site. This is facing east along Baumgartner Road. This is facing west, back down Baumgartner. This is south across Baumgartner Road. This is facing north at an existing access to the site. Here is a, uh, drive aisle from that access. This is a paved drive aisle that does not have access to Baumgartner. This is showing east, uh, and you can see the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Rail Line. This is facing northeast towards an existing vacant building on the site. This is northeast towards an additional vacant existing building. West through the middle of the site, you can see those same buildings. This is facing west, uh, excuse me, west, um, at neighboring single-family land uses. And now the petitioner's presentations.
Mr. Stock, do you have a speaker's card?
I will fill one out and bring it over to Mel in a moment.
Thank, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Tremble, Ms. Wilson. For the record, my name's George Stock. I'm with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Block Holly Commercial Real Estate. Mr. Jeff Hawley intended to attend, but due to illness, he's not here. I make up part of the team. Uh, the architectural component of the team is ACI Bolin and landscape architect is Landscape Technologies. As was stated, we're here to request your consideration for an amendment to the existing M3 and the floodplain M3 ordinance governing the property. The site, which he covered very well, but basically it's about 450 lineal feet of frontage along Baumgartner Road. It goes 750 feet deep along the west property line and about 540 feet along the east property line. As you saw in the photos, there's two obsolete buildings and a paved area on the property. The property is bifurcated by Ameren Transmission Lines and Matisse Creek, generally separating our site from old Baumgartner Road. And then along the east side is the Burlington Northern Railroad. So we are just upstream of the Merrimack River, uh, which is just cut off onto this, this page. A little bit about the site, um, this generally outlined in blue, again, is the perimeter property lines. Red lines going through there show you the designated 100-year floodplain in Matisse Creek. And then also in blue is the 50-foot transmission right-of-way of Ameren's that runs through the property. There is some topographical change. Um, Baumgartner Road is roughly elevation 440 and then there's 40 feet of relief as you go down to Matisse Creek. Generally where those obsolete buildings are and where we'll be placing a new building is about 10 feet below Baumgartner Road. Our proposed site plan is comprised of a 30,000-square-foot service center logistics office warehouse. For Mel, thank you very much for, um, removing the word vehicle. Service center is really, um, it's a multi-tenant building, it's office warehouse, it's very common in St. Louis County. About 10 to 20% of the building is office and the balance is warehouse space, manufacturing, light manufacturing, warehousing and distribution. The building itself is generally centrally located on, on the site. It's about 91 feet north of Baumgartner Road. It is roughly 126 feet from the west property line. Uh, outlined in gray is those areas that are paved. There's 28 parking spaces along the south side and then both the east and the west are the circulation and the outdoor storage. We are proposing a six-foot wide site, six-foot tall site-proof fence kind of around the perimeter connecting on both the northwest, northeast side and that area that would have some storage. Lots of green buffers, um, there's three stormwater management basins. The building itself, finished floor would sit about seven feet below, um, Baumgartner Road. And as you'll see in a moment, in the elevation, there are four loading dock doors on the north side and a drive-in door on both the east and the west side of the building. Relative to the site sections, which are requirement of the submission documents, there's not a real big change in the topography on the site. We have, uh, two sections, one more south and one east-west with the building. You'll notice there's some cut in... You'll notice there's some cut and fill, but nothing substantial, we're generally working with the topography, and we're staying away from the creek and the northern portions of the site. We have a comprehensive landscape plan, which is focused on a combination of trees, evergreens, shrubs, predominantly along the, uh, south property line or Baumgartner, the front of the building, and then along the western property line where we abut the, uh, residential. So the residential, we're leaving thirty-one feet of green space, it'll be landscaped, and then the six-foot-high site-proof fence around the storage area. So a little bit about the building, um, here's a rendering or perspective, and I'll just kind of read verbatim the architect's narrative. Uh, it's a single-story building designed as a painted concrete tilt-up panels with reveal painted access bands, glass and aluminum storefront entrances and windows with pre-finished metal canopies at the building entrances. The building has also been designed with articulation, the panels at the main entry points on the south elevation. The architectural panels on the west and east elevations have been stepped down from the front of the building to the rear of the building to help reduce the overall mass of the building. So the way, the way the building's designed, it's really designed as a two-tenant building, fifteen thousand divided, or thirty thousand divided by two, two fifteen thousand with those entry points on the front corners, and then as you go, we move through, the top elevation is the front, you see those two, uh, anodized aluminum canopies over each corner, and that's the man doors and the focus points. Um, and as we look at the center slide, that's the east and the west side. The large door, that is actually a drive-in, drive-in door into the building. And then the bottom is the side that's docked high, so the, the truck quarter, the pavements recess four feet from the finished floor, and there's two dock doors in each one of those tenant's space. And that concludes the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commission, you have any questions?
Yeah, how you doing?
I'm fine, thank you.
Do you have any proposed tenants?
We do not.
So is, I guess you could answer what would be the la- loudest activity that would be at the building? I mean, other than, I guess, the shipping trucks?
No, I don't know what the loudest activity would be, but I know whatever activities you hear would have to comply with the noise ordinances of St. Louis County with the decibel level. So there would be nothing exceeding those levels.
What's the current zoning?
It's M three floodplain M three, so we're not requesting to change, but requesting them in the ordinance to allow the use of a service center logistics in the outdoor storage.
Right now, the M three planned industrial district ordinance that governs it only permits a landscape contractor's business, so it's very, very narrow right now.
Because that was the business that was.
Because that was the request by the petitioner of, I can't even remember how old that one is. And they'd operated that way for a while, but, um, has, hasn't been, I don't believe the business still runs there.
The building height? And it was a one-story building, how tall is that building?
It's twenty, I, I don't, um, I'll have to get back with you on that, I know it's twenty-four foot clear, but I'm not sure what the parapet's, what the, the height is at, for example, in the rendering, looking at that front corner, but I will respond in writing with the height.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this being built on speculation, or do you have a tenant?
Speculation.
Okay. And have you started any community outreach to the landowner, I guess, to the west and?
I have not, um. My understanding, and they, they may be here, I don't know, so I don't want to speak, but I have heard that there has been some communication, but it's not been from myself. Uh, perhaps those associated with the listing of the property or the acquisition of the property may have.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
The traffic study, I know it's in here, has anybody brought up how much traffic would be coming in and out?
No, but it's, it's not difficult for us to be able to project that for this type of use. And typically, it's not a heavily traffic hit facility, and again, the warehouse component, it's, it's not a distribution facility, as you can see by the low number of dock doors and the building size itself. It's mostly local commerce, um, that would be associated, and so office warehouse, service center, you know, service center example would be like an A T and T store, you know, a repair shop where they work on the technology in the back. So it's typically load traffic generated is the way the I T E looks at this. But again, we can provide data, you know, should you wish, with projected trips.
Thank you, any, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
At this time, do we have any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in favor? Okay, do we have any persons that would like to speak in favor of this petition individually? Do we have any persons representing a group that would like to speak in opposition for a group? Do we have any persons that would like to speak in opposition individually? Anybody here? Okay. If not, let's, uh, like to take a hand count on people that are in favor of this petition. I have a hand, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six in favor of those opposed? One. All right, so we have six in favor, one opposed, and that concludes this hearing, thank you. Now we have P C twenty-eight dash twenty-four St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Good evening, P C twenty-eight dash twenty-four St. Louis County Planning Commission is a request for a reversion of zoning due to the expiration of a planned environment unit, um, P E U procedure. So the request would be to revert the zoning from R one Residence District and Floodplain R one Residence District to the N U non-urban and Floodplain non-urban for seventy-seven point one acres located on the west side of Hillsborough Road and south of Paradise Lane. This site is located in south, the southwest part of the county, and as you can see from the aerial to your right, the site is outlined in red. Here's just a larger aerial of the site. Whoa. That like really skipped, actually, that went back way, way further. We're gonna give that a second. Okay. So that is the public hearing sign looking to the west, um, for this petition. And now we're gonna go to presentation from the petitioner. So just for context, the timeline of this site, the subject site was zoned N U non-urban district with the adoption of the St. Louis County zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-five. The first petition on this site was P C twenty-nine and thirty dash oh-six Serenity Hills LLC. This was a request for a change in zoning from the N U and F P N U to the R one Residence District with, and the Floodplain R one Residence District with a P E U for seventy-seven point one acres. The commission found the P E U procedure to be appropriate due to the rugged terrain of the site and the presence of the floodplain on the property. The county council concurred and passed ordinance twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-six. No development wa- ever occurred on this property. In twenty-seventeen, P C twenty-eight and twenty-nine dash seventeen Serenity Hills LLC came before this commission. Twenty-eight dash seventeen was a revision of the property to its prior N U non-urban zoning for the classification as mandated by the St. Louis County zoning ordinance. The second petition, twenty-nine dash seventeen, was requesting a P E U in the R one and F P R one Residence District. The planning commission still found that the P E U procedure, um, to still be appropriate on the petition site, as well as the R one zoning. No development occurred. Again, in twenty-twenty-two, um, P C twenty-two dash twenty-two St. Louis County Planning Commission and P C twenty-three dash twenty-two Paradise Lane Development LLC was a request for the revision of the seventy-seven point one acre site to its prior N U zoning classification as mandated by the zoning ordinance, and the second petition was to request a P E U in the R one and F P R one Residence District. This petition was withdrawn without prejudice before public hearing, before this commission. So, um, just for context, section one zero zero three point one seven eight subsection ten subsection five of the Planned Environment Unit Procedure, P E U in the St. Louis County zoning ordinance reads, "The termination of Planned Environment Unit or unplanted portions of development Planned Environment Units in the event that the site development concept plan is not submitted, plots are not recorded, or substantial construction has not commenced within the prescribed time limits, um, the Planned Environment Unit shall terminate, and the Planning Commission shall initiate a resolution of intent for the purpose of a new public hearing to revert the property to its prior classification or other appropriate Residence District classification in accordance with the proceedings specified in section one zero zero three point three zero zero procedure for amending the zoning ordinance, which is why this petition is here before you tonight." And I will take any questions.
Do you have any questions? All right.
And then just before, um, you continue, Mr. Taylor, for any members of the public who plan to speak on this petition, you are likely wanting to speak after the next portion, not in regards to what Gretchen just presented. The petitioner, the current proposed developer, will also get up and give their own presentation, and then that's the part you would want to make public comment on. Thank you.
Go to the next presentation, thank you very much.
All right, P C twenty-nine dash twenty-four Flower and Fendler Incorporated is a request for a P E U in the R one and Floodplain R one Residence Districts for single-family residences on thirty-four acres located on the west side of Hillsborough Road and south of Paradise Lane. Again, this site is located in Southwest County, and as you can see from the aerial on the right, the site is outlined in red. This is just a larger aerial of the site. This is the land use map, as you can see, this site is primarily surrounded by a single-family residential. Notably, there's a golf course, um, to the south, and then the Boy Scouts Reservation to the west. This is looking west at the public hearing sign four twenty-nine dash twenty-four. This is looking north up Lockmore. This is looking east across Lockmore. This is looking south down Lockmore. This is looking west. This is looking north, um, on the other side of this green space is Paradise Lane. This is looking south into the site. This is looking southwest, as you can see the topography. This is looking northwest. Again, just noting that topography. This is looking south up more of Paradise Lane into the back part of the site. And next we'll have the petitioner.
I have a question. Wh- what's the, um, well, I asked the petitioner, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the right one that means is?
Yeah, that one, that door.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Sean Flower, and, uh, thanks to the commission and staff for getting me off, coming in tonight, having all this ready for us. So this will definitely be a continuation of the, uh, of what you just saw, because this project's been going on for a long, long time. Uh, and, and hopefully this is a, a, a good solution to kind of the issues, or some of the issues in the area, so. I'll flip through some mine because it is repetitive with staff, but it's, again, in summary, it's a, what I'm proposing is a thirty-four lot subdivision, uh, P E U in the R one and F P R one. So we're basically taking the bottom half of, uh, what was there. Again, Lockmore on there would show the general location, but down Hillsborough Road, closest intersection is one forty-one to forty-four. This is a little different view from up top that I wanted to put on to kind of show some of the, one of the big issues you'll hear over and over tonight is, uh, road traffic and bridge and kind of infrastructure, and how does that work in the area? So what I've shown on this drawing is, um, where the, where the red circle is, is the location of the bridge that accesses this property. Um, that bridge is in, is not, does not provide flood-free access, it's, it's kind of a glorified box over with a, a paving section over it. And it's also private, so there's no, uh, public access until you get to Hillsborough Road. The, the breakdown, the white area, and this is approximate, I haven't, I haven't engineered it, you know, exactly, but the white area represents the proposed project that I have tonight. The purple area represents what this project has been in the past. So it shows the entire area that used to be proposed, and there, and several of the proposals in the past, there were lots that went up into that upper area, and it was, uh, it got into the range of, I think one time it was approved at sixty-two lots, I think is what the last approval was. Um, but of, of importance, the entire area in yellow is all of the people that access the red circle bridge. Everybody in there has that same access point, and again, it's all on a private road, which is not, uh, particularly accessible at this point. This shows, uh, for more of a P E U standpoint, going back to just this project. Um, in rough terms, what we've done up there is we have taken the lower pasture area, and that's what we're trying to develop. Um, and I always try and say on these P E Us, part of the reason we're asking for that as opposed to a straight zoning is to try and work with the topography on the ground. So what you can see is by allowing us to work down in those bottom area, we're able to leave that entire area of wooded, uh, trees alone, we don't get up into that area at all, uh, which is actually really nice, uh, I think for both our homeowners, and it's also a big, uh, feature that the people that live on Paradise Lane have been very happy about. Um, in addition to not having major development at the top, this is just a lot more mild on the whole area, it's a lot less disruptive to the whole area. Um, so this is the least disruptive by far proposal that's been, uh, from a development standpoint down there. Um, and just as a note, there is no access to Paradise Lane down there. That, I've met with homeowners and different groups on it, but I want to make sure everybody understood, it's just an access off of Lockmore. All right, this is a copy of the site plan, just blown up, uh, at a high level, and the projects are, you know, I mean, it's hard to get it all on there in a real visible format, but it shows you the, the entire. This shows it blown up a little bit more, but again, it's thirty-four lots. The biggest features you'd see is Lockmore runs, um, against, if I'm looking at the screen in the far right, and what you'd see is we have one access off of Lockmore that we're bringing in. Um, there's a turnaround at the top, a cul-de-sac on the southern entrance, and there's also a secondary emergency gated access that we're putting in, that's a requirement, uh, once you get over thirty lots with the fire department. So this has been through Valley Park, who didn't have a, that, that, they kind of worked with us on how to do that. Uh, we also have two big detention areas up front, uh, which we believe will help a lot with stormwater in that area, as you, it, because there is no existing, uh, formal stormwater system or running through that area. This is a picture of what the existing, uh, Lockmore, uh, bridge area look like, looks like as it comes in. So it's, uh, what we're proposing to do, uh, is on the next sheet. Um, this reverses the angle, but we'd be putting in a wider, full county standard bridge that would meet county criteria. We've had several meetings with, uh, county highway and staff, uh, to come up with this proposal and make sure it meets, uh, their standards. That does involve some widening of Hillsborough Road at the entrance. Uh, and they've run all sorts of different traffic, uh, analysis on it, running, uh, moving trucks, buses, all sorts of different, you know, delivery vehicles to try and, uh, assess that they, they like that turn. I've let them speak for themselves in their report, but I, I feel like we've met all the right criteria and done everything we can to try and make that accessible. It would be flood-free, it'd be wider, uh, and once, and it would also be constructed in a way that we would have temporary access that would be as good as what's there now during the entire construction period, so it wouldn't cut anybody off. Uh, but then we would put that bridge in prior to development, be one of the first things that happens. Um, and you would go in and put that in, and it should also, uh, help with the flooding in that area, and that the box would be quite, quite a bit bigger than what's there now. Uh, and there's a full M S D flood study and all sorts of, uh, other regulation that's looked at, but that's the proposal. The other aspect of this is, we would also take, uh, the rest of the road all the way down to our entrance and build it to a county standard, including into our subdivision, so that this could actually be dedicated to St. Louis County, uh, in the future, so we don't have, uh, there's a big issue down there now, and that, with that bridge being private, there's all sorts of issues with who has to pay in, how do you improve it, what happens, and it's very difficult. So it will solve a, a long-term issue they've got down there as to how to handle that bridge. I bring this up, um, I wanted to kind of go through one item out here, and I'm kind of supplementing it from my notes on it. One sec here, if this works. So we, we included the site distance study because Hillsborough Road on its own is always a sensitive topic. Uh, it's, it's not a fantastic road, it is, it's two lanes as you go through there. So they did a, uh, this shows you that we've met, this entrance meets all the site distance requirements and anything you would need in St. Louis County. It shows how far away you can see a car, and they can see you. But, um, one thing, there is a study that was done in two thousand and seventeen that the county commission that stated, um, the list of pro, like fixes that you could do to the road, and then they had a bunch of records. the list of pro, like fixes that you could do to the road, and then they had a bunch of recommendations. And one of the recommendations was to limit development until you actually had the road improvements done. So I want to kind of go through since 2017. The county has installed friction pavement, which was one of the requirements on that. They've done better striping, which allows for night visibility. And then on top of what we're looking at, this new bridge would open up this intersection some. There's clearing around that, which should make it better. One of the specific items at Hillsborough Road at this intersection was that they wanted improved site distance for people coming north and going around the bend. So we've talked to the homeowner on the corner. They're actually, they've got that cleared up quite a bit from 2017. But they're, they're in agreement with us to put a permanent site distance easement on the corner, which would make sure that there's permanently no new brush, nothing that would go in that existing corridor, which is one of the key recommendations down that side. We're also working with, we're going to be working with AMR to see if we can't provide a light down at the entrance, which is one of their requests out of the traffic study. Valley Park has a 4.0 million, $4.1 million improvement project going in their section, Hillsborough Road coming up. And I, I guess I would say as well, this, this, the bridge itself at Lockmore, making that improvement for the people that are down there and coming out, I think is a significant aspect. So if you're asked about the traffic study or that comes up, and I'll supplement that in a memo to the staff. But I think that this development meets the criteria of something that would be worth adding with the benefits that it brings to the site. This is simple stuff. We, inside the subdivision, we're trying to be a little less conspicuous. It's kind of a country road back there. So we have a smaller monument sign location. And then we've also liked to work with staff. One of the comments I got from many of the meetings we did was trying to have some landscape offer along Lockmore. So I've kind of circled the area up there along our common ground between our detention and up there where we've talked to them about doing some tree and landscaping to kind of block that. And I think we both agree it's a win for our residents and I think they'd like that down that strip. So this, this just gives you a summary. Again, 34 lots on 34 acres. It gives you the, the list how they are, but they are 71 foot lots. The, the tree removal is another aspect of it that's good. We're keeping about 94% of the trees that are on the subdivision right now. I always like to tell people, this isn't the first time anybody in here has ever heard it. I've met, I think I've done at least four or five meetings. I've met with the trustees of the Paradise Lane. I've met with homeowners of Paradise Lane. I've met with the Lockmore trustees. I've met with Lockmore homeowners in a large meeting. And then I've sent information up to some of the people in the Hillsborough Road project up there to try and keep them up to date. And I'd be willing to meet with anybody else that came out. We've, we've really tried to make this a project where everybody at least knows what's going on before they get in there. We've listed our pricing. It'd be similar houses and similar styles to what we've done at say Bull's Crossing, Summit Ridge, or Hawkins Point. They're all in that area. Utilities, we've bran all the utilities up to grade in that area. It's MOLAM, MSD, MSD compliant, everything on that. This is a summary of my, you know, what I was saying before, you know, fewer lots in prior proposals that have been here. We're staying out of the, we're staying out of the major environmental areas. You're going to have a lot of new county standard accesses, bridge, road sections, site distance easements, and a lot of things that'll help Paradise Lane, Lockmore and Hillsborough Road. And it's, again, it's at a, what we consider to be a modest number of homes. This is my style of houses, you know, at a ranch to a two-story. It'll be anywhere from 2,000 to probably 3,500 square feet. And, and I think these houses will base in the fives, but I would say based on what we're selling those areas, you'll see a lot of houses anywhere from 600 to 800,000 in that area. And this is a representative sample of what some of the houses that we do. And again, it's been, it's been well received in that area. Our subdivisions continue to do well in that Fenton area.
Can I ask you any questions?
One of your first slides showed a pretty large home to the, you know, of the proposal. Is that the Paradise Lane and those owners you've spoken with? Yeah, the next slide that you just passed. Yeah.
Are you looking at the one on the top right, kind of outside of, yeah, that's Dr. Young's house and I've met with him multiple times. And his, he is, he's been one of the key proponents of, of kind of getting organized over there. And then down in front of him, he's got a relative, but that's who's helping cooperate with helping us move the location of the bridge. So there's a lot of people that have had to have help to even make this project possible because we're actually moving that bridge on, you know, their, their trading property that they own privately to allow us to do this thing. So I, those were, I've had extensive, long meetings with all those guys. The, the biggest concern they had in prior projects was they were, the residents up there really didn't like the houses at the top of the hill because they didn't feel like it blended with their houses. They didn't like the trees being removed, but they really didn't like everybody coming up. There's a Paradise Lane there also. So I think they're happy because they're going to have the bridge fixed, but we're not going to be running a lot of new cars up another private road that they're, so they're, they were concerned about having, you know, people on a road they're not going to use. So this last layout, I had all that done before I came in with the plan to the commission.
So you really wouldn't be adding additional traffic to Paradise Lane at all?
Really, the only way it would be is if you counted getting from Hillsborough Road to the mouth of Paradise Lane, but nobody would actually be on Paradise Lane.
Do you have a proposed budget?
The budget for the site?
Well, for the project.
At this stage of the game, I know what the ground costs and I have estimates on those other items, but that's part of one of the, the biggest problems with my business is it's a, it's a, the stuff changes so much. And we probably wouldn't even be into development here until February, March of next year, by the time we get the MSD approvals. So I have, I have some ballpark ranges on it, but I, I couldn't give anything concrete. But I do know the one, the one thing that's different on this one is we, it's a dramatically simple project. That was one of the things that killed the prior proposal that was in here. When you got up on top of the hill, the development was so complex because you had so much grading, you were moving dirt everywhere. We had booster stations to get water and sewer out. So I mean, that was a big issue is the cost. A 34 lot property like this on a fairly, you know, flat piece of ground is, is not, that isn't the most challenging thing in the world. The bridge is, but we've got pretty good ideas on it.
That's what I'm thinking about, the bridge and some of the ancillary work.
We've, we've got, I, I wouldn't, I can tell you this, I, I wouldn't come in and talk to you about it if I didn't have a pretty good idea, at least that, that I could do it and make it match what was sellable.
Just one question. Who, who is going to make sure that they cut that corner and keep that maintained?
It's, it's actually part of our agreement was the new subdivision has to pay for it with, and there would be, there's a county site distance easement that has your standard language on it. That'd be recorded with it. And that's a requirement of the county highway department to have that. But that was our deal with the owner there is, is that we would take the burden off him to do that. The other good thing is on it, his driveway and the neighbor's driveway are there. So it really benefits them to keep it clean too, because they can't see coming around. So they've got a, they've got a self-interest in keeping it cleaned up as well. But the, the site distance would be, you know, it would basically be paid for. He, he would get a notice from the county. He would tell the HOA, you got a bill to pay and they would clear it.
Thank you. Any more questions? Alrighty. Thanks. That, are there, we have a, folks that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Any folks that would like to speak in favor as a group for this petition? Are there any folks that would like to speak in opposition for a group? Please come on.
Thank you so much. All right. So I'm a novice at this. Do I just, do I start?
Please state your name for the record and as you're representing a group, please name the group that you are representing.
My name is Rob Zeitler and I'm speaking on behalf of Paradise Valley Residents Homeowners Association. Good evening, everyone. My name's Rob Zeitler. I live on 800 Wildflower Valley Drive in High Ridge, Missouri. I'm also the president of the Paradise Valley Homeowners Association. Today I want to address the concerns and ongoing challenges of maintaining Lockmore Drive where the future Serenity Hills development is being proposed. For four years, our association has shoulder the sole responsibility of maintaining this half-mile stretch, even though it benefits multiple parties. We haven't received any financial assistance for Brad Langenekker, who owns the land Sean Flowers purchasing for Serenity Hills Development, Rob Carr, who owns the entrance of Lockmore Drive, Mike Saboda and his wife, who have a single homeowner, who is a single homeowner, not associated with Paradise Valley HOA, and the Paradise Valley Golf Club. The situation is simply unsustainable. Paradise Valley HOA already maintains nearly five miles of its own private streets. And Lockmore is adding a significant financial burden to my homeowners association. More importantly, there is a crucial culvert on Mr. Langenekker's property that requires urgent attention, which is in the photos there. This culvert diverts water from the golf course, Saboda property, at Brad Langenekker's property, where the future Serenity Development is going to be. The culvert has the potential to fall into the creek and if it happens, we cannot get to our homes. Especially if a huge rainfall occurs. This is a single access point to over 170 homes. In the summer of 2022, a fallen tree knocked out a power line and came across the golf course entrance on Lockmore, trapping several customers of the golf course and also stopping traffic into the main entrance to Paradise Valley subdivision. Emergency vehicles needed Lockmore access to the situation and due to Lockmore being in a floodplain, the culvert is crucial to us. Pointing fingers on who is financially responsible for Lockmore won't solve this and we need a solution. While we appreciate Sean Flower's efforts getting part of Lockmore Drive and the entrance adopted by St. Louis County for Serenity Hills, his development only addresses part of the issue. In addition, how do we know that only adopting part of Lockmore won't increase more water and pressure to the unmaintained portion of Lockmore Drive? The failing culvert is not on our property. It is used by other parties. And Paradise Valley HOA shouldn't be solely responsible for something we don't own. We do not own that. Although Sean and I are currently in talks of a maintenance agreement and working it out, my HOA should not bear the full responsibility of the situation. I understand if the numbers for him don't work, but for years, our situation has not worked. And I believe now is the chance for our voices to be heard. Therefore, I urge the Planning, Zoning Commission to help us achieve a goal here. Either one, bring Lockmore Drive up to STL County specs, or two, maintenance agreement with all parties on Lockmore Drive. The issues I have addressed here are not aesthetic, but have a real safety concern. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I just want to make sure I understand that where is the culvert exactly in like relationship to the bridge?
I'm going off of this. Yeah, if you go, it's off, it's down further on Lockmore past the entrance to this, but it still remains on the property of the future development of Serenity Hills. I'm trying to find. So if you go along Lockmore and go all the way to the left, it is before the end of that. It's towards the end though.
Before Serenity Hills Drive?
It's about that. Yeah.
Right in there.
Yeah, it's right in that area. And as you can see, those pictures with the flood, that is as early as 4th of July. And we had a lot of rain.
And so there is no, I mean, there's an easement for everybody to use Lockmore Drive, but they don't have to maintain it?
Right now, from what I understand, because I've only been there four years, the easement we have access to, there is an easement there and our concern, which Sean and I are talking about is having access to that. Yeah.
Say that again.
Sean and I are talking about the easement access of the Serenity Development for us, Paradise Valley.
What about the rest of the people who use Lockmore?
I can't, I can't comment on that.
They don't, they have an easement to use it, but they don't have a maintenance agreement?
There exists no maintenance agreement at all with any parties. Lockmore Drive has basically been a private road, from what I understand, since the seventies. And as we all know, businesses and things progress over time and this has just been an afterthought. I pull this slide up. Thank you, Sean, by the way. If you can see the very bottom portion, those are all homeowners. Now, they are in Jeff County. I am in St. Louis County, which is the two above. But that is our only way out. We're concerned that if the rest of Lockmore Drive is not brought up to county specs, that the water pressure, and as you can see in that culvert, it's already deteriorating. It is not on our property. We are a private subdivision. It's not adopted by the county, either counties. And we have to maintain our own roads and they're deteriorating already. And now we have the burden of the rest of Lockmore Drive.
Okay, but supposing that these homes aren't built and it continues to deteriorate, aren't you still on the hook for it?
We are not on the hook for it, but we have been talking to our attorneys on how we exercise a certain Missouri statute to enforce that maintenance agreement.
You say it's a private road, private and who owns the road?
I've been told it's owned by various parties. Just, it's not owned by one owner. This particular plot for Serenity Hills, the, the bulk of it is by Brad Langenekker, which is selling to Sean for the Serenity Hills Development. So our concern is that the development does do it, the part that he owns that St. Louis County is not adopting or bringing up to specs for. How do we know that water runoff isn't going to occur? In those pictures that you can see, water's coming down from all sorts, which is not Paradise Valley owned, but it's our only access.
Yeah, but what happens if no building's done and it still continues to flood?
We've already, we have that plan and where we're going to have to enforce the law and make X, bring everybody to the table if this doesn't go through. So if this does go through, this is where our voices are heard. And if it isn't, then we go to Plan B.
Which would involve bringing in all the other members of the HOA?
It would be involving everybody that accesses Lockmore, which is the golf course, the Saboda property at Brad Langenekker, if he decides not, if this development doesn't go through.
Are, are all those homes up there in Paradise Valley Golf Course part of what you're talking about? Like, do they use Lockmore too? They do, right?
All those homes at the bottom there?
No, all those homes, yeah, right. That's up on the hill.
That is south right there? Yeah, the way you're looking at, yeah. All those homes use that Lockmore Drive to get out.
Right, in Paradise Valley subdivision, right?
Correct.
And they don't, they're not take, participating at this point in the maintenance of Lockmore Paradise Valley subdivision?
Our, our subdivision's kind of odd. So it's split between Jeff County and St. Louis County.
Right.
We have also a subdivision, part of our subdivisions across the golf course. There's three access points. But the majority that you see here is again, of the 170 plus homes that utilize the Lockmore Drive. It just happens to be split between two counties.
Got it. And that's what you, that's what you're representing?
That's what I am representing. I'm representing all those homeowners right there.
I'm sorry, I was confused by the Paradise Road.
Yeah, yeah.
So this isn't the Paradise Road part. This is the Paradise Valley subdivision.
That's the Paradise Valley subdivision, right. You get, don't get mixed up with Paradise Lane, which is before, yeah.
Okay.
I thi, I believe it's that red part up there.
It's the lane.
Yeah.
We ran into a similar situation in Eureka with Jefferson County being, they went ahead and approved the subdivision. The people in Eureka had no say in it because we live in St. Louis County. And they had a pretty, pretty hectic flood over there recently. So I, I get what you're saying, but I also, it still plays in my mind, you gotta solve the problem independent of this subdivision.
We do not own any part of Lockmore on that side. And I, and I agree with you. We, we still have, this is our first to have voices for it. We tried meeting with parties a few years ago and there were a few conversations, but it never took off. The golf course has never come to any meetings at all. And obviously they're public, they're not private, so they need the road. Otherwise they get no customers. I can't speak on behalf of them, but we can't get them to come to a meeting. So if necessary, we'll have to go other steps there. If this development doesn't go through.
So do you think a replacing of this culvert would solve the issue?
We want somebody to just be responsible to maintain. I'm not saying you can get something for nothing, but we aren't the only ones that use it. And this is on somebody else's property, but we need an access point. This situation has been like this for decades, but no one has ever solved it. And here I am, being a four-year resident there. I get to go before you for this now.
Right. I appreciate what, everything that you said.
I appreciate what, everything that you said, but time is up.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And you spoke as for a group?
Yes.
All righty. Do we have any individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up.
Good evening, my name is Rex Jenkins and I am also a resident of Paradise Valley, my neighbor of Rob's. And my issue is the same one that Rob has, it's about this road. The ask that I have isn't to solve all of that drive into the subdivision, the ask is that if he, if we're going to develop this, this land, this 34 acres, that access road that all of us use needs to be incorporated into what the requirements are for building the subdivision, bringing it up to county specs for the length of property that he owns, I think is a reasonable expectation for, for giving, you know, permission to, to build this project. And that's basically my ask, the reason I've come.
What would you like to see specifically in that stretch that he owns, just?
Bring it up to county specs, just like he's doing from the bridge to the entrance to his subdivision? If he just does that all the way to the end of the property line that he owns, that's the ask.
Understood, but that would not resolve the flooding and other issues, correct?
I understand, I'm not expecting him to resolve all the flooding issues, I'm just expecting him to resolve the issues on his property. That's, that's really all I had to say, and my issue that I wanted to make sure that the commission's aware of.
We thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Come on down.
All right, thank you. My name is Mike Williams, I live at 4923 Paradise Lane, so just north of that red dot. The, the main concern I had was, and I do thank the president, the presenter for bringing up the, the road, but, but Hillsborough Road, if anyone has driven it in the past before, it is a pretty dangerous road to the point where St. Louis County actually hired CH2M to do a road study back in 2017 to find, I guess, possible solutions, the dangerous areas of the road. So some stats that came with it was 96 accidents in 13 years, about 4,000 or 5,000 vehicles per day. One of those accidents was fatal, so much where ultimately Hillsborough Road Improvement Initiative was created. We have a Facebook page with 368 members, which mostly consists of the neighborhoods you see here. There's another neighborhood across the street, Hills, which is Bridlewood South, Bridlewood, Upper Bridlewood, and then Williams Creek. So although it sounds like there's going to be some improvement to the intersection of Hillsborough and Lockmore, you'll see in that study, I'm sorry, I didn't bring more copies, that majority of the accidents aren't really at that intersection. It's the intersection at Lower Bridlewood, even up further, there's an S-turn as they noted in the study. So it, it doesn't address those areas of concern that we have. So what, what concerns me is all the extra vehicles now on the road and there's a lot of fairly newer neighborhoods that were built within the last 10, 15, 20 years, which brought about a lot of young kids, which mean 16-year-olds are getting their driver's license every day, so the amount of cars are increasing and you can, once again, see that in the study, that the amount of cars are naturally increasing on the road. And then this really proponent kicks us into maybe an extra, I, I don't do road studies, but if we're talking 34 homes, average house has what, two and a half people in it, maybe that's what, 50 cars, 75 cars, you know, one-way, 150 cars going back and forth to work every day. So that, that's my, my main concern is, although I, I like the improvement at Lockmore and Hillsborough, you'll see in that road study, a lot of the accidents are prior to that and just the commuting along Hillsborough Road. So I, I don't have a solution, but my fear is the fact that St. Louis County had to do a road study. We, we had a real good reason because of all the accidents, including the fatality, and, and the recommendation at the end of the study was no more development until some significant repair. And I, I'm sorry, that's my term significant, but until improvement along the road.
Thanks, sir. What's the approximate speed limit right there at Hillsborough Road and Lockborough, on, on the Hillsborough?
Oh, I guess 35?
Yeah, we can find for you that number.
I, I think it's 35.
It's not like 50 or 60.
No, 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 no. It's a really, have you ever driven?
I have not.
Okay. It's like heading to the Bat Cave, there are trees that canopy, it's pretty, but it's dangerous. There's no shoulder, you drop off into a creek. On one side, there's a big mountain, this kind of rock hill on the other side, so there's, if a semi is coming at you, you've got hill, rock hill on this, this side and then a drop off into a creek on the other side.
And I guess minimal lighting along the road, I guess?
I don't think there's any lighting, no. Not, not, maybe at the northern point of Kraus Farms, the horse ranch, and then maybe at the entrance of Lower Bridlewood, but the stretch everywhere else than that, I don't think there's anything along the road. I'd love to see it widened if possible, but they'd have to chew into that hillside. Do, do you know Toby Moriarty? I think she's still, she might still work.
Yes, Toby is, she is a county staffer.
Yeah, she was on this project with us seven years ago, so she may know or be familiar with the, the study at the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, with that being said, would the petitioner like to come up for rebuttal, please?
So I, I won't take a ton of time on it and I do think, I appreciate everybody that came up, I, I think that's one of the benefits of meeting with everybody and trying to do it in advance, everybody's kind of had a chance to vet it, so we got it a little more clear. I would say on Rob's comments, I, the subdivision, 34 people can't bear the cost of trying to bring that road all the way back down there. In particular, it hurts marketability because they don't use it, so we've tried to bring it in as far as we can, but from, as far as putting that on there, if you look at it, it would be taking that whole slide of, in effect, the ask is, I'm gonna take that whole slide of people back there and there's no offer of an assessment, nobody's coming in here saying they want to pay for it, but they're saying not only do you need to put the new bridge in, but then not enough, not just get the pavement there, but now I would need you to add pavement, you know what I mean? So there, there's a limit to what new development can do, but this definitely in all situations takes their most expensive, biggest liability, which is the end bridge, off the plate, gets that and it brings a huge amount of pavement up to standard and there's all sorts of options, at least moves the ball down the road. I, I would also say that on his culvert issue, I've talked to them about going to take a look at it, I'm not as, you know, and briefly looking at it, it may be something that just needs to be cleaned out and taken a look at and as a property owner, I don't have an issue with that. We've also talked about going down there and the, the biggest problem they have is there is an agreement for access, but there's no agreement for maintenance or how to do it or anything. And that's what we were saying, I could grant him, we're gonna look at how to get them real access so they could say, okay, this section of Lockmore, this is a refreshed easement, this is the group that could go in there, you know, so they, they could get their rights entitled and upgrade themselves and that way too, and on the culvert, you know, if they need, you know, they have right to access, but they don't have right to fix. Or, you know, and it doesn't even really say plow, so we can, we can greatly eliminate the friction that's on those issues. And then the last thing I was gonna say is on the, on the bigger Hillsborough Road ones, I went through the list items that have been updated since that 217, 217 study, but the, probably the, the best single item I'd leave you with is, you know, I was a developer on Williams Creek and that would be 2005. And at the time, nobody, you know, that, that was, the issue was the road and that's a large development back there, but the biggest benefit that that brought in at the time on Hillsborough Road, that was a, they had a one-lane bridge right next to this place. So Hillsborough, part of their deal was they funded a bridge that provided a two-lane bridge that's accessing right now. You get progress in pieces, it's very difficult, you're not, and especially in a process like this, you're not going to be able to find the last 34 people and a subdivision can fix every problem for the last 30 years, but if you allow responsible development that has some infrastructure in it, what they can do reasonably, you will find that the area upgrades quite a bit over time and, and it gets other things moving. And again, on, on, on the other stretches where he was talking about, I do think in the near future, you do have about $4 million allocated by Valley Park where they're trying, they're in MSD approval territory right now, so they are trying to improve other areas. But in all the situations you're in opposition to this, every single one of their issues is actually improved by the development. I, I fully honor the idea of coming up here and asking for more, but I'm just saying, I think the proposal we've got is very good and if you approve it, you're helping them despite the objections. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a show of hands of those in favor of this petition, please, in favor. Three, three, okay. Those in opposition?
Please keep your hands up for a moment.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I see eight.
I see eight as well.
Eight. Okay. This now concludes this hearing, thank you very much. Now we have PC 30-24, St. Louis County Council.
Good evening, commissioners, this is PC 30-24, St. Louis County Council, a request for a planned environment unit in R6 to permit multiple family residences and associated amenities. This is on a 5.48 acre tract on the north side of Valley Park Road, approximately 40 feet west of Caesar Drive. As commissioners may recall, this site is in Southwest County and on the aerial is bounded in red. The proposal will be developed alongside an adjacent parcel in Valley Park, which is outlined in purple. In this larger aerial, commissioners can see that the subject site and the site to the northwest are both currently vacant. Surrounding land uses include single-family residences to the south, Booter Park to the east, and commercial property to the north and west along the highways. So this is looking northwest at the public notice. This is looking east down Valley Park Road, note there is no curb on the subject site. This is looking across Valley Park Road. This is looking southwest up Valley Park Road. This is looking into the site, commissioners might be able to see the telecommunications tower to the north of the site. This is looking northwest at the eastern edge of the site, structures within Booter Park can be seen on the right. Finally, these are then the border on the western side, this unpaved road is Thornhedge Drive and across the street on Thornhedge is a single-family residence. So for the purposes of review, this site first came in front of the Planning Commission this year as PC 05 and 06-24 VP244 East LLC, a request for change in zoning from C6 Office and Research District to R6 Residence District and a plan, a request for a planned environment unit in R6 to permit multifamily residences and amenities. Commissioners saw this request during the public hearing held on February 12, 2024. In March 2024, commissioners voted to approve the request with recommended site plan revisions during their executive meeting and forwarded the request to County Council on March 11, 2024. County Council approved the bill for change in zoning, but denied the bill for PEU procedure on April 30, 2024. So when the commissioners voted to approve these requests, the intent was for both procedures to be filed in tandem. This is because the site's hilly terrain and proximity to telecommunications towers has made development challenging. Commissioners found that the PEU procedure is an important component of regulating the site design. This site was previously zoned C6 Office and Research District, but plans to develop this parcel were abandoned for the above reasons. Because the intent was to have the two filed in tandem, the county executive vetoed Bill 68 for the change in zoning. The county council's intent was not to prevent multifamily development at the site, so they have referred the matter back to the Planning Commission for review. The preliminary site, site development plan is substantially similar to the site development plan shown when the Planning Commission originally approved the request earlier this year, with 84 multifamily units, a clubhouse, and associated garages.
What was changed?
So we had recommended more landscaping and fewer parking spaces along Valley Park Road, so they put in a new garage instead of having just like open spaces to have cars like with their headlights pointed towards the road.
I recall.
You want me to say it again? Oh, no, you're good. So we had recommended some measures to prevent car headlights from shining into Valley Park Road, including like a wall between the two garages and like more indoor parking space.
Is that, is that it? Okay, I guess at this time, I'm gonna answer. That was our presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak for a group in favor of this proposal?
Good evening, commissioners, Jordan Dorsey with Miro's Holdings, that's where the developer for the project. And I just wanted to clarify, the, the site plan that you're seeing in front of you is actually identical to the site plan that was modified at the request of the Planning Department. So we're really here as a procedural matter. What happened here was it went to the county, County Council, Councilman Hancock moved forward with the rezoning bill, but not the PEU bill, in which case the, the County Council actually voted in favor of the rezoning only, but then that went to Mr. Page's desk and he vetoed it. So rather than us trying to override his veto, we acknowledged that, you know, Mr. Page was not going to move forward with the project if the PEU didn't move forward with the rezoning. So with the advice of County Legal, we're back in front of you tonight. So I just wanted to clarify, the project itself is, is identical to what this commission voted to recommend, you know, back in, in March. And then I'm, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor?
All right, I have a question, sorry. Oh, Mr. Bedell, if he, if, he can come back at rebuttals.
Go back up for rebuttal. Okay, if none, do we have individuals that would like to speak opposing this as a group? Any individuals that would like to speak in opposition?
As an individual.
Yes.
As an individual.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Virginia Wolf. I live in St. Bernard Hills, which is right across Valley Park Road from this proposed development. I have several concerns. One is increased traffic on Valley Park Road with that many families going in there. Children from St. Bernard Hills and Bentley Manor cross Valley Park Road to go to Booter Park. And we already have issues with people speeding on that road and it's not a flat road and it has curves in it. So I'm concerned for the kids. The other concern I have, that stretch of land is a big hunk of rock. When they go in there and start developing, they're gonna start blasting and they're very, very close to these homes who were built in the 60s and a lot of us have concerns about what it's gonna do to our foundations and our walls and our windows and whatever. Because, I mean, it's just a big hunk of rock over there. So those are my two main concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Twiston. I live on Caesar Drive. I've lived in this subdivision three times since 1967. This whole area is nothing but a big rock shelf. This proposal for homes, apartments, development has been offered many more times before now. The blasting is an issue. How do you make sure that what you're building on is secure unless you can secure your foundation to the rock face? The developer who's putting in the new homes is not going to pay for our homes in this 500-home subdivision if our foundations are cracked or, you know, damaged from their development issue. MSD came in and just put vibrating tube down the center of the sewer lateral line down the center of my street and my basement that had never flooded, flooded three times in the following year because of disturbing that clay soil against the concrete base. It flooded from the bottom up. This is a major concern. Traffic is also a major concern. Feasibility studies have always indicated that this is a two-lane road, no shoulder. And this is a very popular cutoff for people when 141 floods under 44, which happens. And they have improved 44, and the access in from Valley Park has been improved, but not headed north from 141 on our end. You still have to go to the very base to get onto 44. So people use the cutoff at the top of the hill. 141's down here under 44. They take Valley Park Road, and it takes them past Merritts and into Bowles Avenue. And I have seen personally, every street in my subdivision backed up car nose-to-nose for hours on end with people trying to get in when that floods. And that's not something that's solved, that's gonna happen again. So those are my concerns.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Another person or not, but we're gonna ask or presenter to ask any questions. Come on down.
Hi, this is Mike Ashford. I live in the area. I second everything they said. And I spent 30 years with a very well-known youth organization. And I work nationwide with law enforcement, with educators, with civic leaders, with a youth protection program. And I didn't hear in this presentation, are these renters, owners, how many? Is it a high-rise apartment building? What is it? Did I miss it?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
I did? Where did I miss it?
So this is a, this was originally heard back in March when all of these were described. I will tell, so I will tell you, this is a, this is a multifamily development.
Renting?
It is a rental, it is a rental.
What's the minimum rent?
That is not a question of note for the Planning Commission to consider.
No?
It is not a plan to be considered.
$600?
I won't even speculate.
Okay. How many units? Eighty-four?
Is that correct, Ms. Wilson, 84 units?
One building has 48 units and the other has 36.
Okay.
Thank you.
Minimum one bedrooms?
We can.
Don't you have the plans?
Let me address this. When this was proposed before, all that information was here.
Okay.
This was just bringing this back.
I understand that. I used to get these memos.
For this, okay.
Emailed? I don't anymore, I don't know why.
Then I would scan that code outside, and you should be able to request those. You probably talked to Mel.
Would have been nice to be there for the first meeting. Do you not do the electronic emails anymore?
So in the past couple of years, the county did move to a different online meeting portal that has its own subscription service in it. So if you were getting our emails through Constant Contact, we don't use Constant Contact anymore. But as the chair was saying.
I mean, I'm talking 15 years ago.
Right.
So this is an issue that if you'd like to stack afterward, that would be.
Yeah. But regardless, so these are rental units, and all the traffic's gonna come out and in on Valley Park Road, right next to Booter Park?
This development is proposed to conjoin with a development in Valley Park proper. So we're, you're only seeing the part that's in unincorporated St. Louis County right now, but it would continue.
Where will they come out?
Into Valley Park, if you let me finish, to the outer road of 141. So just, you'd be able to leave this development, travel west, and then get out onto the.
Isn't that where Wet Willies used to be? And it would go down like this?
Correct, it's the same site.
I came to this group probably 15 years ago, and I think you guys were here. I don't know if you're appointed for life or whatever, you're not elected, but.
I wasn't here 15 years ago.
I think you are. But you were going to, there was a proposal to build some kind of lab, and it just fell apart because of that reason, I believe.
It did, but you know what? A point of order, point of order, because you're supposed to be up here because you want to speak in opposition.
I am?
Well, there's nothing opposition that you've even talked about yet. You're just opposing that you didn't get the proper information. You hadn't said anything about opposing.
I'm opposing that it's right next to a St. Louis County park where dozens of kids play. I'm opposing that the traffic's coming in and out. And I'm opposing that you told me it wasn't gonna come in on Valley Park Road. It's gonna go straight down a, whatever where Wet Willies was, and a weed dispensary, and a whatever's down there. I mean, that's what I'm opposing. And not to mention just the traffic. And you've already added those hideous-looking apartments at 44 and 141 that look out at the landfill and traffic? I mean, I think you're just trying to ruin Fenton as a nice little community over the years. And now you're gonna build some by the malt shop. The homes we just heard about, if you've ever been back in that area by Avalon Hills, Smyzer Mill Road, it's congested as can be, and you're adding hundreds of cars, so. But I didn't even know about that till I got here. But as they said, you know, foundations will be ruined. They will be broken, they will be cracked, windows will be cracked. Is someone gonna inspect all those homes afterwards? Or will they be able to make claims and someone pays for it, besides their insurance with their deductibles?
That's what the presenter's representative will answer when he comes back up here for rebuttal. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And please don't destroy Fenton anymore.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other individuals? Please come down. Thank you.
So I just, I know this is for the PEU.
I'm sorry, would you say your name?
My name's John Metz.
Thank you.
I live in St. Bernard Hills, neighborhood behind Valley Park Road. And our public notice indicated a request for the PEU for the site. I request that the PEU only be considered alongside a clear plan and description of what it will be used for. Since no plan has been provided, I request we don't approve the PEU. It feels like we're kinda giving them a blank check. And frankly, I'm already not happy about the development going in. And if we're gonna change even more zoning, can we at least know what we're going to do with it? At the bare minimum? I mean, I said a lot of points, and I was here for the first meeting, and I don't need to reiterate those because you heard them. So that's my new point that I'm bringing to the table this time. Can we at least know what we're approving before we approve it? I understand that it can be for barber shopper, beauty shopper, childcare center, cigars, food, drugstores, laundry, you know the list, but I would, if, you know, can we at least know what's going in our neighborhood? That's my ask. Thank you for your time.
If I could address that, it sounds like what you're referring to are some of the commercial uses that are permitted in conjunction with a residential development.
Yes.
Authorized by the PEU. This developer has not proposed any commercial uses to go inside of these multiple-family buildings.
Right, but if we rezone it, then they could.
So right now, when you ask.
Better is to address some of these, we can address these concerns with you. We can stand out and describe the process for you. What we are technically here for today is for a resolution of intent sent to us by the St. Louis County Council to look at a PEU that's actually already been reviewed by this commission several months ago.
With the site development.
With the site development plan. So all the questions that you're asking, we have the information for. But that I'm happy to walk you through all of that subsequent, and this evening, standing out to answer these questions for you.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any other individuals? Okay. If not, can we have rebuttal, please?
Mr. Dorsey, would you please? I know that you're not technically the petitioner, but if you would come up and address a few additional questions, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah. So as Mel mentioned, you know, we engaged with the Planning Department a few months ago, and we addressed things like traffic and headlights and landscaping. And so the site development plan that has already been through the commission incorporated all of those items. We also share a concern with traffic. We actually had a traffic studies in process right now, and that was also a request on the Valley Park portion of the project. We had our scoping meeting today with MoDOT, County Highway, and Valley Park. So that's something we're evaluating currently. And that'll come back in terms of the site development plan that, you know, is the next step in the process.
Entry, entry points?
Yes, sure. So, yeah, what you're seeing here is just the county portion of the project. So on top of, you know, all the other challenges, we're splitting jurisdiction here. So the primary access for the project is actually at the intersection of Smyzer Station Road, which comes right off of 141. That's the outer road that Mel mentioned.
That's the Valley Park.
That's on the Valley Park portion of the project, correct?
And then this, yeah, and then Valley Park Road here, I guess? That's the St. Louis County portion, and that's the second entry exit point.
That's correct, yep. As I understand, Valley Park Road is a county road. And what you're seeing here is the portion of the project that is on the, within the county's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I think I recall something about emergency vehicles was an issue at that first meeting, making sure that they had access. It looks like you got that resolved. And then I guess, not to go too far down this rabbit hole, but what were some of your comments about some of the potential blasting that's gonna go on site and?
Sure, yeah, that was a question that came up at the original public hearing on this project. So I'm not an engineer, obviously, but Cole Grading, who is the excavator for this project, has done all of the work in this area as a very large, experienced grading contractor. They've assured us that we don't need to do any blasting based on this current development plan. I don't want to stand up here and say we will not do that because I don't know the answer to that today. But right now, we're being told we do not need to blast. If we do need to blast, then I'm sure, you know, through the engineers and through Cole, there's a process for that with inspections and insurance and making sure that, you know, we're being cognizant of the neighborhood when that does happen, if it happens at all.
To build upon Mr. Dorsey's comment, Mr. Bedell, is that the county does have a blast code that does protect homeowners, that there is a process that would have to go through. So if that were to be the case. But to date, all the information from the petitioner is that that is not required.
Got it. I just have one question that I didn't hear anybody ask, but we had the one individual talking about the young kids that go to the park. Is there gonna be a sidewalk along Valley Park?
There currently is not a sidewalk.
Will you be putting one in just this side of the garages?
We're not planning on it today. So part of the development plan that was approved by the, or voted for recommendation from this commission included a list of development conditions.
I'm sitting here looking at this.
Yeah. I don't want to say this unequivocally, but I'm not sure there is a large ravine that is adjacent to the property to the east between us and the county's property, a quarter mile down the road, which includes that park. So I can't say whether a sidewalk is feasible or not. But as part of that traffic improvement study, it's ongoing. If improvements are required at Valley Park Road, I presume that they would include something similar to a sidewalk.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I'm gonna like to take a, thank you.
Great, thanks.
I'd like to take a hand count of people that are in favor of this proposal. See, we have one. Those opposed?
I see five.
Five. Okay. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you.
I have a question. Where can I go?
We can speak out in the, we can speak out in the chamber after the public hearing is done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go to the order.
Nothing for the go to the order. The next meeting of the Planning Commission will be Monday, August 5. At this time, we anticipate it would be a video conference, unless because the commission is going to discuss their bylaws, you would like to meet in person. But we can send out a poll to make sure that that's.
Okay, well, at that time, if you see where we're at with the bylaws, and if we need to meet, then we'll meet in person. Is everybody in agreement of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Can, can they be reviewed by legal before we?
Yes, they can. So if the, if the bylaws committee gets, determines that it has all the comments that it wants, it folds in, like the comments that you've provided to date, or if anyone else provides any comments, and we can run those up to the county councillor's office, at which point the county councillor's office will review them for, you know, legal sufficiency to ensure that they do meet all of our codes and requirements for our commissions and boards. At which point, you can either, if we can get that done quickly, perhaps it can be ready for your August meeting. Otherwise, it can wait, it can be done in your September meeting. There's not necessarily a rush to, they've been the same bylaw since 1987, so, you know, what's another, what's another month or two? So.
They work us.
Okay. With that being said, I'd like to move for, do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
With all that being said, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and we are adjourned until August 5, and it is 8:55.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.